Counsel meeting to order. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I want our allegiance to the divine of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Ms. Hoover? Ms. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowling?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
We have five members present this evening. That means we are unable to suspend rules and have all three readings on any of the legislation before us tonight. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we only have one item, and that is to remove item one under the standing committees of counsel, and that is the Infrastructure, Parks, Recreation, Public Places, and Streets Committee. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we amend the agenda as stated.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover? Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to requests to address counsel. We have one that was submitted online. That was for Carl Hulse, but I do not see him here this evening, so we will move on to the next request to address counsel, and that is Bishop Sonny James.
Good evening, awesome folks. Hello to all of our residents, to our city leaders. I come today with a full heart because as we look around our nation, really around the world, but as we look around our nation, we are seeing people who are full of stress and anxiety, and there's a lot of lack of trust. I'm asking that we, as a body of believers, that we pray one for another during this time, we also pray for peace around the world. It's so disheartening when I watch people feel like they have to take measures into their own hands or take drastic measures because they don't feel heard, they don't feel connected, they don't feel valued. And I personally would hate for any of our Norwoodians in particular to feel that way. So I'm encouraging all of us, let us pray one for another. Let us pray for continued peace in what I believe the greatest community in all the land. And let us make it a priority to listen to one another, to hear one another's heart. And sometimes we have to recognize that we will not see eye to eye, but it still doesn't mean that we can't show one another respect. And so with that being said, I want to applaud our leaders in this city. I want to take time out to publicly say thank you to our mayor. I want to publicly say thank you to Mr. Brayden. I want to say publicly thank you to Ms. Donna Lake. I want to say thank you because we are perfect examples of what a family can look like and what a family, how a family should act with each other. And I'm confident that as we see turmoil going on around us, and guys, if we continue to just show love and respect for one another, I truly believe Norwood, not only is it phenomenal now, if I hadn't mentioned that, but moving forward, I truly believe Norwood can set an example for many other cities in our country. And I want you all to know, Mr. Bonzel, I'm very proud of you. Things have not always been peachy, peachy, but because we didn't quit, because we haven't given up, look where we are today. And that's something that we all should be celebrating. With that being said, we recently had our first Youth and Community Safety Summit. As I've said before, I'm saying now, my commitment is to help our young people stop some of the acts that have been going on. And I need your support, your continued support. Mr. Moore, I thank you for attending and being there. Those of you who have attended other events with me, thank you so much. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I want to give credit where credit is due and thank our school board for granting permission for this event to happen. And it happened at our gymnasium. We didn't have one incident of outburst. Youth came and they were able to share what some of their issues are. City leaders came and they were able to listen and hear. So in July, we're coming back again, and I'm asking all of my peers, make it a priority to come out with us. My end goal is to host this event once a year at Paycor Stadium. Can you imagine youth from all over the state coming together in the same room with youth advocate organizations to pair these kids with the right appropriate group and then funders walking around saying, hmm, you've got something good going on. I want to give you a check and help sustain you. God bless you guys. Donna Lake, have a wonderful day wherever you are. I made it. Bye.
Moving on to the next items on the agenda. Every reports of standing committees of counsel and the council committee of the whole. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your committee of the whole to whom was referred, master plan for the city, new council orientation, community survey distribution, and community survey early results and follow-up, beg leave to submit the following report. With regard to the community survey early results and follow-up, there are still just under 700 surveys have been submitted, but not all were completed. High-level early data was reviewed to look at distribution among wards and other demographical categories. With regard to the community survey distribution, signs have been placed in most of Norwood parks with QR codes for scanning, and surveys from these signs have been completed and submitted online. A new QR code will be sent to churches in Norwood, asking for them to share and post the code for each respective congregation to complete. New council orientation, there were no additional updates on this matter. With regard to the master plan for the city, discussion took place regarding the utilization of a consultant or contractor to put the plan together based on the survey results. All matters will remain in committee for further discussion and development. Respectfully submitted, Joseph Gears chairperson, Ms. Alexis Royce, Mrs. Emily Franzen, Mrs. Susan Hoover, and Mr. John Moore. Mrs. Franzen?
I move that we accept the committee report.
In minutes.
In minutes, thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. This is an ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance, Section 1759.07, nuisances to revise the type of weeds determined to be a nuisance. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the second reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Bowling?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance, Section 1759.07, nuisances to revise the types of weeds determined to be a nuisance.
Thank you. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. First is a resolution to approve the final Hamilton County 911 Plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128, and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowling?
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to have the first reading of the resolution. Mr. Gertner?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gertner. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Gears. With regard to this, something that I was just, I guess, procedurally curious about is, seems like this is basically a requirement by the state that every county puts forth its own 911 plan, and then in turn, the county puts together the plan, and then every municipality, as well as the commissioners, need to approve it. I know that Andrew Knapp had sent something on April 23rd, and it was like two sort of municipal legal bodies, just procedurally, like where does that go? Is that going to you? Does that go to NOAA? Like, how does, I guess, how does our relationship with the county on these kind of matters work?
I will open that up to... I am not sure who, if, exactly who they address it to and then where it gets distributed as far as whether it was a US mail. Or, Mr. Powers, are you able to speak on that?
I don't have a lot of information on that. I can tell that the request came from Fire Chief McCabe. This is just kind of a standard thing that needs to be done as they update their plans.
Yeah, and so, yeah, it wasn't, again, I don't, I don't have, like, I'm not going to overrule the county committee that put it together, but just sort of procedurally, because I think it was like April 10th was the, sort of, the commissioner's signed date. There was sort of a 60 days kind of thing of like municipalities. Obviously, we don't, you know, have enough people here to do it
Right.
in the emergency situation. And so, just kind of begged the question for me, like, are there opportunities? What are the opportunities for Norwood to work better with the county and for stuff like this? Just kind of, like, where does it go? Right? Because, because on the communication I can see, it just says, like, municipal legal bodies of Hamilton County, right, from Andrew Knapp? But just from like kind of an intake, collaboration, partnership kind of perspective, I'm like, it's just not clear to me, and maybe I'm the only one being new, sort of how this kind of stuff flows downhill from the county to Norwood.
They, they do take feedback from area emergency responders as they develop that plan, so there is some of that back and forth there. But once we get to like sort of a city council level, there's not typically a whole lot that's done.
Yeah. Well, and I'm sorry, I guess, like, how does stuff, like, does Andrew Knapp, when he, when he sends this, does it go to you? Does it go to Joe? Does it go to Mr. Mayor? Like?
Our liaison is, is Tom McCabe, the fire chief.
Oh, okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mr. Gertner, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
A resolution to approve the final Hamilton County 911 Plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128, and declaring it an emergency.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the City of Norwood, and there was one request to address counsel on this matter, and that is Mr. Jim Easton.
I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you and speak on this matter. The proposal for the Pride Month in Norwood kind of confused me and others I've talked to in the fact that it divides the community, and I'm not sure why we'd want to divide instead of unite it. The preamble to the Constitution of this great country states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form more perfect union." We and union indicate that it's not divisive, but we're supposed to gather as a whole. We have differences. We have things that we each have as individuals, preferences, likes, and even things that we stand firmly on, but that shouldn't be a dividing point. We should unite on the things that we can agree on. And it's also, the proposal would exclude others, people of the non-LGBTQ community, and this creates a division, not unity. I don't think that would be the intent. I would hope not, that we're not trying to divide us into segments, but like he was talking with the youth, which I didn't even know he was going to speak on, but try and figure out ways that we can separate our differences to unity. In the Ohio's Constitution, the preamble states, "We, the people of the State of Ohio, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, to secure it, blessings, and promote a common welfare." This, once again, is inclusive. It's all Ohioans. It includes us as groups, but in a common welfare. It also recognizes Almighty God and the God of the Bible, and it recognizes God who blesses us and us community and gives us true freedom. And in Romans 10, 12, and 13, it states, "For there is no difference between Jew and Greek." And in that section, in that time period, those were the big dividers. Those were the things that people were having issues with. And it says, "The same Lord over us is rich unto all that call upon Him, for whosoever shall call upon the name of the Lord shall be saved." God himself doesn't divide, but invites all to be, come to Him. He's not segregating different communities, he, different members of community, but wants them all to come together. This is also stated in the Old Testament, if that would be your preference, in Joel 232. So it's both Old and New Testament. And if God states he wants us to be not divided, but under the guidance of why would Norwood want to separate the people into groups and not into a whole community? This proposal is an opportunity to build walls, divide us into groups, and leave people without the unity that I believe was the intention of this community, the State of Ohio, and of course, the nation. I would say let this proposal drop, look for ways to build community, and unite everybody under common goals and common causes that aren't divisive but inclusive. And I'd appreciate your consideration of the things that I had to state and the authority that's given by God and both the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Ohio. Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, that was the resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the City of Norwood. Mrs. Bowling?
I move that we have the first reading of the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to have the first reading of the resolution. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen?
I wanted to call out Eric, Mr. Eric Thompson, a previous council member. By call out, that sounds bad. I apologize. But I wanted to acknowledge his role in getting this resolution on the agenda a couple years ago for the first time. He is currently on vacation. He had wanted to try to come and say a few words, but I just wanted to, to say that he had been the driving force initially behind getting it on the agenda when it was first put on three or four years ago. Since we aren't passing it tonight, potentially in two weeks, he might be able to come and say some stuff, and I'd be happy to have that. So just wanted to make that short note. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling?
Yeah, so just to touch on some things, as much as I would love to think that LGBTQ people do feel like a part of the population at large and are welcomed, and that there aren't things that divide us, according to the ACLU on Friday, there were 588 pieces of pending legislation that limit or violate the inherent rights of queer people. So these could be things like restricting access to accurate IDs. It could be restricting access to healthcare that is affirming to them. It could be putting students and teachers in positions where they are forcibly being outed by their teachers, along with a whole slew of other things. So as much as I would love to think that we don't have any need for this and that folks are welcome and a part of community everywhere they go, that's not only not true at the state level, as three of those 588 pieces of legislation are within the state of Ohio, it's not true at the federal level. And in my experience, it wasn't always true for me in Norwood. I was not made to feel super welcome when I first came here. I know I've told the story before. My wife was very hesitant to put a pride flag up on our house when we first moved here. I told her she was being ridiculous. We went ahead and put it up, and our house got egged the next day. So, you know, I think it's easy to say, we don't need to have these pieces of division, but they aren't pieces of division. Things like these resolutions let people know that this is a safe place for them to be. No one's being excluded by anything that this resolution is stating. I don't think that we would say the same thing about any other resolution that we've had honoring any other groups of individuals. I think that there's a level of nuance to all things, and not everything is for you, and that's okay. Not everything is for me. I'm not a veteran, but I acknowledge and support, you know, I was at the event at Victory Park. I am totally pro us having resolutions that celebrate the black community, which I'm not a part of, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There is nothing divisive about this. This is not to call people out for not being queer. That would be obscene. That's wild. It's just letting people know that they have community here, that they are welcome here, that we see what's happening, and we're paying attention. So I am thrilled that this is going to be on the agenda again next meeting, and I hope we keep doing it for years to come.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
Resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the City of Norwood.
Thank you. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder did not have a report for this evening, but he is open to questions if anyone has those. Sorry, I kind of voluntold that. All right? If there are no questions. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I'll keep this really short, myself. We are still hiring tax clerks, so if you all know anybody that would like to be a tax clerk, send them our way or send them to, you know, the HR department. Starting pay is like, they just changed it, but starting between $20 and $21 an hour, so it's a, definitely a solid start, and hopefully that gets even higher in the future. The other thing is, I know we don't have a communication about it, but I would like to request that we have an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss pending or imminent litigation. We have Patrick Woodfight here today that has some information, plus there was a meeting that we have to split, I think it would be helpful for you all to hear about. That, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Beginning next week, or I'm sorry, next meeting on the 24th, in the Finance Committee, we are going to review the end of month reports. Typically, they get emailed out to the Finance Committee, but we really don't do a review of those, so we're going to start reviewing those and the questions that the Finance Committee has, or any comments, and review that together. Also, we're going to do the same with the report on accounting methods each month, give an update of progress and where we are and what we're working on. Also, the Tax Budget Public Hearing is going to be next week on the 24th, and we will have the tax budget ready for its first reading. We also rolled out a new email address this week in the Auditor's Office. It's accounting@norwoodohio.gov. All, all of our invoices from our vendors are going to be emailed to that address. Mary, Sasha, and myself will have access to that. And what we're going to be doing is emailing the vendors and moving forward. It's probably going to take a little time, but we want to get rid of the mailing to individual departments, and so we can have a little better control over that. And then finally, we will have the P Card Manual on the 24th. Mary completed that and rolled that out to the department heads. They're reviewing that this week, so we should have that on the 24th, and we'd like to get the first reading of that on the 24th, second reading in July, and then a final reading, the first meeting in August, and that, at that time, Republic Bank is rolling out their new P Card system, so that will coincide, so we're looking forward to moving, moving ahead with that.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? All right. Mr. Moore? Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right.
I'd like, I just wanted to announce-
Don't press your butt.
You pressed my butt.
You pressed my butt.
Is that myself?
Actually, there's going to be a banner put up on City Hall here soon. June, the third week in June, traditionally, years ago, when I was looking through some archives and I saw these really neat, this neat banner that they had on the front of City Hall, and each year in June, the third week in June, it was Norwood Clean Up, Paint and Beautify Campaign Week. So for that week, there'll be a banner that goes up, and it's, it's not really, it's, what's special about it is, it's just sort of an inducement, an incentive, to say, "This is the time to make the city look really beautiful. Put that, you know, put a little extra flowers out, put some paint on your buildings, make sure that the city is looking good, because July is a huge month for the city, right? There's a ton of stuff going on in July." So we'd like to sort of restart that tradition. So the third week in June of each year, and the banner will go up each year, hopefully from now on, and it's really just saying, "Hey, you know, look at, look at your street, look at your, you know, look at your curb appeal on your home, look at your curb appeal on your business." And the city will be doing the same thing. You'll see some flowers getting planted out in front of City Hall and different things. So just taking a little bit of extra pride in the home that you have, the community that you live in, maybe get out in the parks and pick up some extra trash and do some of those things that a lot of you do on a regular basis. But it's really just an incentive to say, "Hey, this is where we live. Let's keep it beautiful." So that third week in June, which is coming up in less than a week, so just wanted to mention that while I had a chance. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to unfinished business. Mrs. Franzen.
I have one short piece. So we did have an infrastructure meeting, however, due to a last-minute injury, we didn't have quorum. There's nothing referred there. We didn't have anything to report out. The meeting was just more of an information sharing thing with Mr. Mike Skelly of the Community Development Office, or Economic Development Office, rather, and we talked a little bit about some of the upcoming capital improvements to the parks, which we're very excited about. So just wanted to put that out there for full transparency. It was televised, but we didn't, it was not something where we made any decisions or received anything that we would pass, act on to council. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? All right. Any new business? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Gers. I guess this is another somewhat procedural matter, but since we last met, there were a few email communications that came through, one regarding a traffic study, one regarding a liquor license. But in those cases, I don't feel like they're for me, but I feel like sort of expecting somebody, and I just don't know if anybody has responded to these folks, or those are outstanding. So I guess it's just kind of a question for the group.
So the liquor licenses, those get emailed out to the department heads, and then the administrative specialist to council will collect those responses, and then at our next meeting, that liquor license will be put on the agenda for council to approve or deny based on objections or lack thereof.
Was there any, I ask if anybody followed up on the traffic study email?
I'll look back. I don't know if there was anything further outside of what was submitted or requested.
Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure those didn't fall through the cracks. And then I guess the second item on new business is that I just wanted to commend the Fire Department, Norwood Ready Kids, the Police Department for the Touch a Truck event that was this past Saturday. There was a little gathering in the side park here at City Hall, as well as lots of kids, you know, climbing up in the fire trucks and all that kind of stuff. And so just wanted to commend the Norwood Ready Kids organization, as well as the safety and service areas of the city for a great event last Saturday.
Thank you. Any other new business? I will repeat what Mr. Miracle stated earlier, that in two weeks, we will have a public hearing on the tax budget. So notice will be posted, and that will be advertised, and that public hearing will take place at 7:30, so it will be part of our regular standing council meeting. And moving on to communications. We have one communication that is from Mayor Victor Snyder regarding May Mayor's Court
Dear Mr. President and council members enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of May 2025. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Snyder, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we receive and file the report.
Motion to receive and file. Mrs. Bowling.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we enter executive session for the reasons stated by Mr. Bonzal.
To discuss pending or imminent litigation?
Yes, thank you. There's a word in there.
Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. So the motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to enter executive, executive session for the purpose of discussing pending and imminent litigation. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Who, oh, sorry, Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We will now enter executive session. Those of you who are not elected officials or members of the administration, we ask that you exit council chambers. Cameras and microphones will be turned off, and once executive session has ended, we will notify those of you who are waiting outside. Thank you.
From Executive Session, Mr. Gerton.
Make a motion to adjourn the amended -- amend the agenda to add a committee report for the Finance -- Finance Committee.
Motion by Mr. Gerton to amend the agenda to add a Finance Committee report. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Mr. Gerton.
This is for the Finance Budget Audit and Claims Committee, May 27, 2025, to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood. We, your Committee of Finance, Budget Audit and Claims, to whom is referred the 2026 Tax Budget, standing reports and claims, beg lead to submit the following report. The 2026 Tax Budget is due July 15, 2025. The Auditor's Office has a first draft complete with the goals submitted to Council for a first reading on 10 June 2025. The Auditor's Office is also working on a purchasing card manual. The Treasurer's Office currently has hiring exams scheduled. And the Treasurer's Office has also reported that City is currently on track to have more income than estimated currently forecasting a surplus of $1.4 million. There were no claims to discuss. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jeff Gerton, Chairperson, Mrs. Amy Lee -- Mrs. Emma Franzen and Mr. John Moore.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to accept the committee report. Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to excusing absent members, we do have two. Mr. Moore.
I'd like to motion that we excuse our absent members, Ms. Hoover and Mr. Braden.
Motion by Mr. Moore to excuse the absent members. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gerton.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bowling.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.